Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the State and City Council. It's Tuesday, the 19th of February, 2019. And would all of you please join me with the live song?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A dream to be realized. Under additions to the -- actually not additions to the agenda, I just want to move something up from business from the mayor. Maybe up before we do presentations from the public, I need to make some appointments to committees and boards and whatnot. And I promised these people that they would come up to the meeting, that I wouldn't keep them here all night. And so some of them said tentatively they would come to a meeting. So I need to follow through with that. But are there any additions to the agenda? This is just a correction. Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias? Okay. It looks like everyone but Counselor Hook is not here, but she may be late, I don't know. But everyone else seems to be here. So I'm going to do these appointments with the council's consideration. For Parks and Recreation, and I'm probably going to butcher this name, but I want to try it. A.J. Westland and Wayne H-O-U-G-H-T-A-L-I-N-G. Huffting, something like that, maybe? I don't think you say it, probably Massacre did. On the Budget Committee, Ralph Lewis and Connie Dominguez. I'm not sure I did that right either. And on Housing and Neighborhood Vitality -- Vitality, excuse me. Advisory Commission. This is a new thing. We want to try to assess the health and welfare of our neighborhoods and just start to take a look at the housing in the community and assess the needs there. So Tyler Garrys, Fred Kroom, Steve Halverson, and Julie Whitehurst. And some of those folks might be here tonight. There's Julie, okay? And the lady next to you, Julie. Oh, that's Connie. Connie and Julie. Got them. Okay.
Fred.
Okay, Fred, okay. But there are some of the people with your -- you folks' consideration, I'd like to appoint those to committees. And we're going to flesh this Neighborhood Vitality Commission out and see where it goes. But it's a start on looking at neighborhoods and trying to assess those needs, some that we're not hearing very much. So with your consideration.
Are those all of them, Mr. Mayor?
That's it for tonight, yes.
So moved.
Okay. There a second? Do I need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. To affirm these appointments, would all say yes, please? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And there were no descending votes, so you folks are appointed. And that's about it. We don't do a lot of fancy things. Mumble words over you or anointing or any of that silly stuff. But we'll -- and Alyssa will be in touch with, especially on that Housing and Neighborhood Vitality Commission. We'll let people know when we're going to try to set up a meeting for that. Budget Committee, that comes through. And Parks and Recreation, that's all done from City Hall. So we're good there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick point of acknowledgement. Thank you, folks, for coming forward. Diversity now and the number of folks that are coming here has been fantastic. So this is the -- for us, for me individually, this is the first time I've seen such depth. So thank you very much for coming forward and volunteering.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. We've got a presentation by Thomas Hoag, Marion County Economic Development Coordinator, but I'm going to listen to Mr. Stratton tonight under comments from the public. Do you use the microphone, Harry, and tell us what's going on on Burnett Street?
Well, I'm still -- I'm here, just like my wife was last month, about speeding on our street. We almost had our neighbor get hit tonight across the street from us. She just started to back out and the cars are flying down the street. So we're still asking to have something done to stop the speeding, you know? And it's not happening. We've been doing this for years. This is the first time we start coming to the City Council finally, trying to get your help on this. We've asked for speed bumps. We've been told outright, no. But one thing I know is you can't patrol the street. You don't have the man-hours to put on there to stop it and to keep it stopped. That's why we brought up the thing about speed bumps, because that's the closest thing we can find to trying to slow it down. And so it's still a request that's there. We're still asking for help. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. We've had animals killed on the street. That's already happened. We've already, you know, we've had close calls with other cars. I took the bushes out of our front, out of the medium. We had bushes there years back. I had to take those out because of the speeding, because I had too many close calls just trying to get out. I had to make sure I could see farther down the street to make sure I didn't get hit. So, and it's gotten worse over time. The young people, the teenagers and the young people down at the end of the street, they fly. And they come down the street, they were just flying down here the other day. I was trying to follow one truck or go walk down to get a license number, and that guy flew all the way down, turned around, came back, and flew back the other way as fast as he could go. I mean, he was screaming down that street and he was whipping in and around cars. So I mean, I don't know how to stop this, and I'm just asking, please, help. So that's my request.
All right, thank you, Harry. Can you respond to that again?
After Mr. Stratton's wife came in the last time, I had assigned that to a person, to one of the officers to check into it and to do some research on it, to find out what's going on in that street. I'll have to check and find out what the results of that were.
Okay. Well, do we have -- Harry, do we have any license numbers of the perennial speeders?
I haven't gone up and down the street to get license numbers. I mean, because they're parked down at the other end.
Okay.
And sometimes by the time I got down there, like I was going down after the one, he turned around and took off before I could get down there and get his number. He went by so fast I couldn't even get his number standing on the street.
Oh, boy.
You know, or on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, he was going by that fast.
Wow.
So I mean, no, I haven't gone down to get all these license numbers, because I don't even know that that would do any good. I just, please, stop. It seems like new ones come along or their friends come down and, you know, and here we go. It's just a dance we want to get started. It's just been, it's getting scarier all the time.
Is there a particular time of day that this happens? I mean, like mid-afternoons or?
Mid-afternoon, in the evening, early evening.
Okay.
Or people coming home from work type stuff, or kids getting out of school, that's around that time.
Three to six.
Yeah. And sometimes in the early morning, around between seven and eight.
Okay.
Around that time, they come flying down that street around that time, too.
Okay, all right. So we're on it?
Yes, we have an officer that's assigned to traffic safety issues, and I did assign that to him, and so I'll find out what he found out when he dealt with that.
Okay, all right.
And we'll keep on it.
Thank you very much.
Do you need us to touch bases with you on this, Harry? I mean, should?
Well, I'll be back and touch base with you if nothing happens.
Okay, that's fine. No, that's fine.
We're going to keep coming until something has to be done.
Okay.
We're just looking out for the safety of people. We have nothing to gain from this other than people being safe.
Okay.
That's all that we have to gain.
Okay. Well, I hope we don't see you down here next month, but you're certainly welcome if you need to.
I hope not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Hoag, Marion County Economic Development Coordinator. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Tom Hoag. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for Marion County, and I'll tell you a little bit about that role in a minute. I've been doing that almost two years now. Before that, I was the Economic Development Specialist for one of the state land use agencies, and that was a statewide role. And I worked with rural communities all over the state, sort of trying to help them figure out how to work on economic development and figure out a path to their future. Before that, I was doing just what you are doing. I was an elected city councilman in a city in Colorado, very much worried about what our economic development future was. We were sort of a left-behind community and surrounded by prosperity. And it was, I think, an interesting and educational ride for me to do that. When I was doing that about 20 years ago, the local paper would publish sort of three anonymous comments a week, and I thought that was horrible. So I didn't really know that that was going to be the golden age and that Facebook was going to make your jobs all that more difficult as time goes on. So I understand the time that you're putting in, time away from family, and the comments that you're doing that work. So I just want to start by saying thank you for doing this. I know it's hard and I appreciate what you're going through. So at the county, we get lottery dollars from the state, and we use that to invest in economic development activities around the county. We've just gone through a strategic planning process that we wrapped up and adopted last year. We use the consultant that you're using now and enjoyed that process very much. When I started the role, I asked everybody I came in contact with, is, well, what's the county's role in economic development? And nobody really had a good, clear answer. And I think that's largely true for counties, and it's very often true for cities. They don't know really what to do, what to put their hands on, and what to take on as projects. What we ended up doing is, there's a number of things, but two main goals for us. One is natural resource innovation. Marion County is the number-one ag-producing county in the state, and so it made sense for us to have that as a primary focus goal. And the second one really is helping our small communities. So there's 20 cities in Marion County, many of them small. Help them find their success in future in economic development. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, to talk a little bit about what we do and what we help fund and sort of to get feedback from you on what sort of things that you would like us to help you do, if there's something that comes to mind, and just to offer my continuing engagement and support as you go through that process and as we find ways to work together on that sort of thing. So that's sort of the pitch about what Marion County does, and I'll be glad to talk about or ask or answer any questions, if you have any. Doing some other things as well. And so I'm engaged in a project with the League of Cities, the Oregon Economic Development Association, and the University of Oregon. They have a sort of an economic development association or administration, that's a federal office, university center down there in Eugene. And we're working on a project to figure out what we can do to help local and appointed officials, so you and your planning commission and folks like that, to get their arms around economic development, how they can think about it, how they can sort of help guide the vision and lead their community, and then sort of find their path through implementation. And so I'll offer that invitation to you tonight. If you have suggestions, you can certainly talk to me tonight about it, but follow up on that. I would very much like to find city council people, especially in small cities, that want to have more conversation about this topic, to see what we collectively across the state can do for our smaller communities who struggle with this topic a lot. They don't quite know where the money is. They don't quite know where the expertise is going to be. But in my many years of doing this work, I think there's two things that I sort of take away as an important part of the kind of work that you guys do. One is, you know, what's the vision of the future and where does that come from? And there's a lot of different approaches that people take on that. To me, it's very important to understand the history of your community and have a sort of a deep knowledge of how the parts and people work in this community, because that really is the clay that you use to build the future with. I think that's very important. And then the one, my number-one takeaway from all my years of experience at doing this, and it's leadership. The quality of a community's leadership is what engages citizens and business owners and new investors into the community. They want to see that you are engaged in the process, talking with each other, talking with your community, helping shape those visions. It's not that collectively or individually you have to be experts at economic development. You have to be experts at your community, your citizens, and what their hopes and dreams are. I think that's the number-one thing. So as you do this work that you've engaged on, just be mindful of what your role is, which is that very much leadership and vision role, and then you can find experts in your staff, excellent staff, to help you shape those things into a series of actions. And so with that, I think I'll stop. You know, it's a 10-minute presentation. I could go on for two hours if you want me to. I'd be glad to do that. But I'd rather take a moment to stop and hear any questions or comments from you, anything I can do to help or help move that conversation along.
Go ahead. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor. Could you provide an example of a project you're currently working on and what kind of resources you've been able to afford to that project?
So we have provided funding up in Jervis for their new sewer and water master planning process, so that I would call a technical assistance grant, to help them do the kind of planning work that they need to do to put the sort of infrastructure foundation under what their future plans are. That's the kind of project that I like to fund. We have recently awarded a grant here in Dayton to the Dayton Friends of Old Town group to do some facade drawings of downtown. So when I look at Dayton, and some of you have heard me say this, I think there's two really key things for you to focus on. One is that old town area and helping that find its future. And then I think the other part, I think what Paul recognizes, what's the future of Wilco Road and the industrial base here? I mean, I don't think there's any surprises that those are the two main things that I think you need to wrestle with. There may be others, but those are the two that come to my mind. And when you think about the history here and where you find that future, so the history here is the river, the water, the fields that were watered, the vegetables that were grown, and then ultimately packed at Norpec. And so all of those conditions in that industry base is changing, but all those resources are still there and in play. But with the market change and circumstances changing, I think part of what you need to do is figure out what's your future in the center of all that resources. What's that look like and how do you get there?
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, and the water thing is taking more of our attention all the time with other people's plans and ours, and it will consume a lot of energy in the next few years.
Yeah, so this morning--
More than we have.
Yeah, and this morning, there was a presentation by an economist talking about the value of water. You may have seen that advertised, I hope you did.
Heard about it.
Yep. And so that economist came and talked really about all the various things that happen in the canyon, what that value of water is, and then some of the challenges ahead. So the county has sort of recently decided that it needs to pay a lot more attention to that conversation as well. I know Dayton's been working on that for quite a while, because it's really part of what you do here, and same in Salem. County hasn't taken much action on that over the years, but with Willamette Water reallocation, sort of the fish in the buy-up, the lawsuit there, and the fish tower up in Detroit Lake, there's just a lot going on with water, and I think that's going to be an important topic for all of us collectively to get our arms around. Really, our conversation's going to have to be with state and federal agencies, and if we can speak with a unified voice on what that ask might be, we'll be a lot more successful than any one community trying to do it by themselves.
Well, one of the things, apparently, I wasn't able to be there, but got this from our city people that were, that one of these development things that probably should happen pretty soon is the sewer systems in Gaetz are in trouble, all septic tanks. And that means that without some help and relief, this river water takes on a distinctive taste, maybe, unfortunately.
It does, and there's both a factual part of that and there's a perception part of that, and both of those have significant economic consequences.
So does that mean a cooperation between Lynn County and Marion then to try to fix that?
So what's happening up there is that the cities up there are working with the county to form a sewer district, and in order to keep it as simple as possible, it's only taking place on the Marion County side and only taking in part of Mill City in order to keep the formation simple. And then, once it's formed, then those other areas can be taken in without much more complication other than what would be analogous to an annexation that you might see. And their goal then is to create the vehicle, the organization, the entity that will help with those sewer plant rollouts. County's role has been really to help as a cheerleader and a convener and a sometimes funder. We've put quite a bit of money on the table to help them get through the engineering parts and the grant parts. And one of the things that you learn in economic development is that if you're looking for federal or state money, it goes mostly to the people who are both prepared, because they have the plans in place, and are nice to work with, because people are people and they like people that they like to work with, and that's what happens. And so we've been working hard at both building those relationships here and with our state and federal partners, as well as helping get those engineering and other plans in place so that those projects can take place. I heard a statistic today that there was probably 1,000 near or failing septic systems near that river up there with no possibility, because of new regulations, to just replace them as they would normally. We can't dig the old one up, put the new one in, because the regulations have changed. And so those cities there are kind of in an impasse unless there's some kind of sewer solution. And that is going to, in take in turn, sort of a regional conversation about how the river is managed. And so that will involve Dayton and Salem and Marion County and everybody else in the area to help that conversation move forward.
Well, that's all good. Is, I guess I'm curious as to whether, is this sewer, kind of a regional sewer situation? Is it just in the talking stage, or have we moved beyond that?
So we're getting ready for the petition to form the district soon. So we'd like to do that before summer, maybe early spring yet. So it's February now, so early spring is getting close. But we want to get that underway. And once that's in place, then we can start using some of that economic development money that I talked about to get to an entity, because we have to get it somewhere so that they can do the work that they need to do in doing that engineering work and then applying for, especially federal grant funding. We want to be ready if there's, especially if there's federal money coming for infrastructure, and everybody says there is, they just don't know when. We want to be ready for that.
And Marion County's right out on the point of the spear on this one.
Well, we think it's part of our sort of obligation and opportunity to work with those small communities on their future. And so there's someone in my office that I worked with who started this as a Willamette University MBA project and is now working at the county, and this is one of her main projects, is to get that thing sort of organized and in place so that the communities up there have control of their own future. We're not going to do this for them, we're not going to run it for them, we're helping them get it in place for themselves. So that's one of her main projects. The other one is we're doing a county-wide broadband exercise to help a lot of communities and even the rural areas get better access to high-speed internet service, because the economy is changing. That's the new sort of infrastructure that you need to be in place. Even if you're out on your tractor on a field, you're wired to the internet, because that's just the way that industry is turning.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So Dan, we are working on our economic development plan, correct?
Yes, we are.
So while we're doing that, you would be like a contact at the county that could help us with resources once we figure it out?
Absolutely.
Get that all hashed out and figure out what that looks like?
And so I came to one of the early-on meetings that Dan invited me to, and I pledged to continue to participate as much as that's desired. And then we always are looking for ways to partner and then, at some point, helping get some of our money into your hands to do those kinds of projects. You know, we don't have enough money to actually build stuff, there's never enough money for that, but we can help with the planning stuff and some of those other things that really, we have the most flexible money in economic development, so we like to use it where it's impossible to get funding from anywhere else.
Perfect. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself tonight.
My pleasure.
One last question for me, or a comment, I guess. We talk quite often with SEDCor. Do you coordinate with them?
So we do. So we fund them, so we're part of the funders. We're, I think, the second-largest funder they have. And so they, in my way I describe it, they're our business-facing partner. So they work on business recruitment, retention, and expansion projects, working directly with businesses, and that puts them in contact with cities. So they are doing that very transactional part of economic development, and so, which is typical, that cities do that, or there's a regional partner or a partner that does that. And so that allows me and the county to sort of step back and think about more of their long-range stuff, so infrastructure planning, so for the long term, because somebody's got that transaction stuff going on and in hand all the time. And they've been terrific to work with. Of course, there's the state system, so Business Oregon, there's a representative that works in this area. The governor's office also has folks working on economic development, and we can help you with all of that stuff. But they should be in contact with you directly, and I think they probably are. I know they are with your staff.
Thoughts, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Tom, do you have a counterpart in Lynn County that does the same thing that you do?
So I don't know that many counties actually have someone with an economic development title. Plaquemus County does, Lane County does, Marion County now does, but I don't know if there's any others.
Gotcha. For this area, I think the Bay County solution's really got to incorporate. We overlap each other. I mean, it's got to be, any help that they can give us to that end, I think would be fantastic.
So I've, in my career, been very interested in doing that kind of regional cooperation things. I was just in a conversation last week with sort of the economic development staff from around the region, talking about what the future looks like. And one of the things I have to report is that traditionally here in the valley, that sort of regional cooperation has been hard to come by, right? And I think part of it, as I kind of like describe it, we all inherited the wealth of the place, and so we really didn't have to get along. And now I think that situation is changing, and we realize that we are in this thing together, and now we have to find ways to work together.
Certainly.
Okay. Other thoughts or questions? Keith?
Just, I want to thank Thomas for coming and coming to speak with us.
Yes, thank you.
Talking about the cooperation, just, I mean, I said, will you come? And he said, here's my dates available, so it was. It's my great pleasure to be here. I love doing this sort of thing, and I love getting my sleeves rolled up and working with you on your project. So anytime you want to see me again, I'm happy to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the public at this time? If not, let's go to consent agenda, please, for February 4th. And all of you, I hope, have had a chance to see that, read through, look at it. If there are thoughts or comments, we should have those at this time. If not, I'd suggest we approve those as presented, just a suggestion, though.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve the consent agenda as it's written.
Okay, thank you.
A second?
A second. A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion on that, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And no negatives, so we'll declare that passed. There's no public hearings tonight, and which means I don't have to read a lot of stuff. There's no unfinished business, so under new business, downtown parking, staff report, Chief Rich Stevens, Dan Fleishman, and let's do it. So, gentlemen.
Great. We drew straws, I got the short one, so I'm going to lead off. And I'll start by saying that we have a new projector in the room tonight, and so hopefully we'll be able to keep the lights on, keep the audience awake, and you'll be able to see the screen. So as is-- So, as is in our staff report, and anyone who's been in the downtown area knows, that for decades, the city has been designated, painted, designated parking spaces on the streets in the downtown area. If you go downtown, you can, and you can almost make them out here in this aerial photo, you can see that those spaces have moved a little bit here and there, you can see the remains of the last paint job on the pavement a little bit. And the past six, eight years, as the recession has faded away and downtown has become a bit more active, we've seen an increase in both traffic and concerns for parking in the downtown area. As you can see in this aerial photo, some of the parking spaces are immediately adjacent to the painted crosswalks at the intersection, and a few years ago, it came to staff's attention that there is a statutory prohibition on parking a vehicle within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection. So, even though the city has painted a designated parking space adjacent to the crosswalk, it is a violation of law to park there. So, with that, as it is now time to repaint those spaces, we are going to be, when we repaint the next time, which will probably be this summer, we will be eliminating those parking spaces that are within 20 feet of a crosswalk. Here's an example of what it looks like when a car parks there. You could see someone coming out the side street, would have a difficult time seeing traffic coming down the street. Public Works staff has, and you've got a complete set of these drawings in your packet, Public Works staff has sat down and drawn out a template and provided a location of markings for new parking spaces, meeting the 20-foot separation from crosswalks. In those diagrams, wherever you see 17 in a little circle, is where we'll be losing a space from what is currently designated, and the real concern of staff, and the reason that we're making this presentation to you tonight, is that once you go through the entire downtown area, the very last sheet of the diagrams in your packet has a count, then we'll be losing about 73 parking spaces, on-street parking spaces from the downtown area. And that is a significant number, considering that there is sometimes the perception that there's a lack of parking downtown. So, staff is aware of the impacts of that. We intend to work with downtown merchants. I have, in the past several weeks, made a number of efforts to find out whether there is a merchants' group meeting, which I'd heard there was, associated with Revitalize Downtown Staton, anyway, to just to get the word out and let them know that we are aware of the issue that will result from doing this, and that we, the city is prepared to take some steps, such as looking at our two existing city-owned off-street parking lots, making them a bit more attractive, adding some signage, so people know there is free public parking available there, and also perhaps, there are a lot of off-street parking spaces downtown, on privately-owned spaces. Today, there are no signs that say "customer parking only" or restrict the parking, but maybe working with property owners to get signs up that indicate that it is public parking. There's nothing that prohibits somebody from parking on those lots today. The US Bank, around upward bound at the corner of Marion and Third, some spots on Second, the phone company owns some parking lots, et cetera. So, I see that staff will be, as this transition happens and we see the impacts of it, staff will be cognizant of those issues and working on resolving them when we see they're there. Rich, you want to add anything?
The only thing I have to add is that we have seen with, over the past few years, with the increase of traffic because of businesses coming into the downtown area, we have seen a lot of near misses, and we have seen the 13 accidents that we listed in there due to the intersections, people stepping out into crosswalks and not being visible, because they're between vehicles when they step out, and it really does, it's really an issue that needs to be addressed before somebody gets hurt down there.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Dan, a crosswalk is not defined solely by being striped, correct?
I'll yield to the police chief on that.
Correct. Yes, that is correct. In this case, it is the, it's the painted, the painted ones.
So, you're telling me every single one of those locations has a striped crosswalk?
I believe it's in the downtown area, yes. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't believe it has to have a striped crosswalk. If you have a handicap or an ADA, that's an applied crosswalk.
That's what I'm getting at.
And so, we have to look at that.
Yep.
And there are some intersections downtown where the crosswalks are not striped today.
Right.
For instance, Third at, there's not a striped crosswalk on both the north and south side of High Street.
Right. That's what I'm getting at, because it's still, the state statute is still apply, whether it's striped or not, due to what Lance was talking about, the ADA accessibility, so...
Where I was referring to is where it doesn't cross, where, in a T-intersection.
Gotcha.
So, where it doesn't cross at the T.
Yeah.
Then that's not considered an intersect, a crosswalk.
It does not apply to mid-block crosses, if there's a handicap approach going, for example, going across the driveway approach there, that, and there's the one that goes out in the street there, that is not an implied crosswalk, so you wouldn't lose parking spaces there. As you can see, we have parking spaces direct, right up to a driveway. You can't park in front of a driveway, but you can park right up to a driveway.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Oh, no, I forgot my question. Hold on. Dan, have you looked at, because I know these are all parallel parking spots, is there any possibility of doing like the horizontal, or not horizontal, but the diagonal, excuse me, spots? Is that a possibility at all?
I've looked at that possibility on Third Ave only, but I think the result would apply elsewhere, because pretty much all of the streets downtown are 40-foot wide, curb-to-curb, and having diagonal parking would mean eliminating parking on one side of the street.
Gotcha. So, you'd lose more.
And so, therefore, I think that you wouldn't gain any parking spaces.
Okay.
Because you'd be eliminating, you know, on Third, if you were to put diagonal parking on the west side, in order to have the travelway necessary for too late traffic, you'd end up eliminating the parking spaces on the east side, and therefore, pretty much end up with the same number of parking spaces per block.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that, because I've heard people talk about that previously, and so I'm, so you're saying this, the street is too narrow in order to do that on, it would, we would lose parking because the street's too narrow?
I think you would not gain any parking. I'm not quite sure we would lose it.
A lot of times, when you see that, it's a one-way street as well, because you have to back out.
Okay.
You generally like to have traffic going one way when you're backing into traffic. So, Third Avenue would be either a northbound or a southbound, and then you'd, you know...
Oh, that makes sense. Like in Salem, usually one-way. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, please.
So, Dan, I haven't presented this question to you ahead of time, because I honestly just thought of it about an hour and a half ago. In this specific Oregon revised statute, you reference 811.550. There's also exemptions, you mentioned that in the initial slide. It discusses specifically, when applicable, exempts vehicles stopped, standing, or parked momentarily to pick up discharge of a passenger. It also allows for loading and unloading. Is there a reason that we don't just make all these spots, loading and unloading spots And again, if you can't get back to me today, that's fine, I understand.
Right. No, I guess we could do that, but it will still result in the loss of a parking space, because it would be just for stopping and standing.
Right.
Loading, unloading.
Okay. So, the reason I ask specifically is because I realize that there's probably merchants, people dropping off their children at ballet, things of that nature, that are going to in front of that area, and to me, that just seems like a really easy solution to this issue, and I realize it's a huge issue, and it's going to have an impact downtown, but I feel like that that would be mitigated somewhat by that, and also achieve the public safety goal. While I'll be at engaging your police force a little bit more, chief, at first, when people realize, hey, this is the only time and place you can do this. Is that a viable alternative to this? Well, not alternative in that we're replacing those spots, and we're not getting the use of them back.
Just thinking off the top of my head, my biggest concern would be near the crosswalks, for people pulling in and out of the crosswalks and being blocked from people at any time real walking across there. On the corners of the intersections with, you're still going to have, on all the corners, you're going to have crosswalks. What might be a possibility is, in some of those places where they do quick drop-offs, is have a 15-minute or a 10-minute parking spots in the middle, and that would open those spots up faster, so they're not blocked up all the time, so you have the loading and unloading zone like what you have in front of the post office. So, that's a possibility to look into, something like that, that might potentially help.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One of the, is one of the parking spots you're talking about, that's the public one by the Moose Lodge? Or we, the ones that we own?
Yes, yes. The city's two off-street parking areas are Third and Florence by the Moose Lodge, and the other is what I refer to as the municipal court parking lot, so it's second in Florence and wraps around behind the municipal court building.
Okay. Yeah, because that's a big parking lot, and that's, I don't, I didn't know that that was public and that you could park there, so that'd be pretty awesome.
Yeah. In the past, there has been signage directing people to free public parking, sometime, I think, since I've started working here, so probably sometime in the past eight to 10 years, those signs have disappeared, and it may be this is the reason to get them back up. And also, staff has been talking about some improvements that could be made to both of those parking lots, to just make them a bit more attractive and of an asset to the downtown area, particularly the municipal court parking lot could have landscaping done without losing any parking spaces, because the drive aisles between the spaces today are excessively wide, so those aisles could be narrowed up to a standard 24-foot drive aisle and provide some space for landscaping and stormwater management, et cetera. So, staff has started to talk about those ideas. They would, of course, be dependent on coming up with the funding to do those types of improvements.
Who owns the parking lot across from SCTC, across from the library, on, off of First?
I believe that that is owned by SCTC.
It is?
I agree.
Dan, are we, is anyone going to see 342 or just 73? I see a real battle here.
Well, today, the on-street parking in that area, First to Fourth, Washington to Water, there are 340, whatever the number was, parking spaces, and we calculate that by, when we re-stripe to comply with state law, that we'll be losing 73, or roughly 20% of them.
Okay. But is anyone going to see that big number, that there's a lot of...
That there's still 270 spaces?
Yes.
Well, some people, some people see the glass three-quarters full, some of it's eight-a-quarter empty.
But we can accuse of, being accused of destroying the downtown by taking all the parking away, or trying to Portlandize our parking by making everyone get out and walk, or, you know, other fantasies, but we can say there's still lots of parking down there.
Yes, as well as all of the off-street parking, both publicly-owned and privately-owned. So, this 342 is just the inventory of on-street spaces.
Yeah. I think we really need to emphasize that there's still parking down there. Thank you.
What's the capacity of our public-owned lots for cars?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
The Third Ave lot, that Third and Florence, is about 24 spaces.
Okay.
The municipal court parking lot is in the order of 36, 38 spaces.
And those are underutilized, in my estimation.
Yes.
Today, those are significantly underutilized.
Okay.
Okay. This is informational. You gentlemen have any other comments on it? Staff will keep the council informed of the progress of the repainting and our efforts to assure adequate parking in the downtown. Good. Anything else, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Dan, you did say that you're going to notify, try to notify the downtown owners and try to, as much as you can, the merchants and whatnot, for that transparency.
We will get some information out to the merchants and downtown businesses. Again, this is something that's not going to happen this budget year, so it'll be sometime after July 1, before it happens, so, you know, it's nothing that's imminent in the next several weeks.
Okay.
Okay. So, I can park right up next to the bank and take my chances, right? Or say everyone else can take their chances.
There is a painted designated spot on the pavement there.
Yeah.
But you can, you can read the statute as to where you're allowed to park, Mr. Mayor.
That one spot right next to, on the east side, right next to US Bank, that, that's, boy, that one scares me, and I even slow down when I go by it, which is the best part. Okay. Annual sidewalk maintenance program. Lance, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In your packets this week, you received a memorandum from me regarding our sidewalk program. I have prepared a slideshow about the maintenance program tonight for your guys' information. It's a presentation to illustrate where we've been with our sidewalk program, where we're at now, and where we're going in the future. Okay. So, sidewalk program actually started in 2012, from what I understand. It was maintenance, and primarily, it was sidewalks were driven, replacement was driven by complaints. In 2012, the end of 2012, '13, the city developed a sidewalk maintenance program, and between 2012, 2014, we've had three different projects going on. From 2012 to '13, the sidewalks from Washington to Water, First to Fourth, were replaced. That was a project, '13, '14, Fern Ridge Road, First to Fourth as well. For the last three years, we have just been replacing sidewalks with our street maintenance programs. Other than that, the sidewalks that we'd send out were just maintenance, or were complaint-driven as well. And this year, we're starting the maintenance program back up. One of the nice things, I have another engineer in my office now that I can give projects to, and this is one of his projects he's working on this year. So, the state municipal code requires each property owner to be responsible for the curbs, sidewalks, street trees, and landscape strip. They're responsible for that strip. Any curbs or sidewalks that are not in good shape or meet our code, they're required to replace it or perform maintenance on it to meet our code. These are other cities. We're not unique in that aspect. These are the other cities in the area, actually all over Oregon, that require property owners to maintain... to maintain their curb sidewalk and planar strips. And this was as of last year, I did this survey. So, you know, it's fairly recent, and you can see most cities are in the same boat as us. And all property owners within Oregon are pretty much in the same boat as the property owners here in State. Our current sidewalk problems are many. All you have to do is go outside and take a walk down any of our sidewalks, and you'll probably come upon some decrepit sidewalks. Failure to maintain these sidewalks creates liability exposure to both the property owner and to us as a city. Neighborhoods and business areas deteriorate, and property values decline. In 2015, when I first got here, we had a survey done, and the participants of that survey, which were the residents of State, ranked sidewalks fourth out of all 12 possibilities for what the city's top priority should be. So that started in 2015. We're finally getting to that, and I'm looking forward to trying to upgrade our sidewalks throughout the community in the coming years. When we go out, or I send my inspectors out to look at our sidewalks, these are the issues that they're looking for when they're inspecting sidewalks. I won't go through them all, but you can read down, I believe this is, this may be in your memo, no, it's not in your memo. These are the items, it's in Section 1204-260 of the municipal code. These are the items they go look at, and they inspect each house or each sidewalk to see if they meet our code. And again, here, I'm comparing some of the things that we look at to what other cities look at as well. We fall right in line with that, with other cities in the area, as far as panels, cracks, vertical separations, things like that. You can see there, and the bottom is the ADA requirements by the feds. We meet or exceed every one of those, which is good, good for us, good for our community. And, yeah, that's what it illustrates. And so these are pictures that we've taken around town during our inspection. You can see there's a gap separated by more than an inch from that panel to the left. It's a tripping hazard, and it's tough for people in wheelchairs to roll down sidewalks like that. You can see, obviously, it's pretty obvious to the right, if you were trying to walk, or if you had problems with your walking or wheelchair, where that vertical separation might be a problem for you. We have this in town, entire pieces are of sidewalk missing, taken out, grass growing in between it. And then you've seen the picture to the right, many sidewalks are like this. Right in front of my own office, we have sidewalks like this, where it's not really, it doesn't even look like a sidewalk anymore, it's just chunks of sidewalk, you know, chunks of concrete, banded together, and there could be separation vertically and horizontally. And you can see there, it's broken into smaller than a foot. This is right out in front of the Jones Motel. You can see the grade from one piece of a panel to another, changes by more than one inch or a half an inch per foot, basically that's 4%. That's over a 4% grade change between the panel to the left and the panel to the right on that left picture. And then we were just talking about handicap ramps. We are supposed to have handicap ramps. We don't have them in a lot of areas. This is what a typical handicap ramp looks like in many of our areas in town, it's just a curve. That doesn't do anybody any good when you're in a wheelchair with something like that. Something that we have been doing in Public Works with any of our street projects has been replacing all the intersection handicap ramps, trying to upgrade that. That's a requirement by the feds to do that. So we have been meeting that, and we'd like to expand that a bit in the coming years, try to get all, or at least our intersections up to code for folks that have issues with their ADA or have any sort of handicaps. We have surface irregularities where there's concrete that's just been eroded over time, trip hazards, you can see on the right there, we have utility poles in the middle of our sidewalks. You're supposed to have a four-foot clearance between, a clearance, clear span on your sidewalk, so people with wheelchairs can get around impediments. In a lot of areas in our town, we just don't have that. And so that's another thing that we look at when we're going out and inspecting areas. So we have three goals, basically, with this program. Number one is obviously to improve public infrastructure, provide safe travel off the streets for pedestrians and people with and without disabilities, and ensure sidewalks are maintained for use by the community as a whole. You can see here on the left, it's a repaired sidewalk down in Water Street, just west of Jet Auto. We replaced some panels on Florence Street, south of the public parking area there, put new street wells, or tree wells in there. And here's some trip hazards. We ground the concrete down there. We had more than an inch separation vertically, and you grind it down, that's a possibility, depending on how much concrete there is. And then there's some sidewalk crack repair to the right that we can do. Our project tax, we developed a citywide grid in the past, and it just took our community and it divided it up into eight or 10 sections. And we go out and we do our inspections, it's based off 1204-260, as I said. We identify, repair, replace sidewalks that don't meet that code. We notify the property owner of the damaged sidewalks. We outline our options for the property owners. We grant them 30 days to make arrangements for replacing those sidewalks. And we provide a financing tool for private property owners to get the work done at a group rate when we do our annual maintenance. And so before, as I said, State was divided into eight sections. This year, I've changed it a little bit, I want to use, I want to kind of use the Marion County tax maps, and trying to do that for all our infrastructure, so everything's on one datum. So this year, we're doing, in the middle there, it's hard to see, but we're doing 10A and 10BB and 10BA. Those are the two sections. Basically, that's north of Regis Avenue to Shaft Road from First to Gardner. Options for the property owners, once we go out and we determine if they have some work to be done, the owners can do it themselves. If they do it themselves, then they're going to have to get city permits, and we'll have to inspect the work. Property owners can hire a contractor, and they'll have to do the same thing. The contractor will have to get a right-of-way permit, and we'll provide city inspections. Or if it's part of our annual maintenance program, they can authorize the Public Works Department to make the repairs, and we'll bill the cost to the property owner based on the lump sum bid, we'll break it into square footage, and they can be billed with And this is how we do it. The city will bundle the work together, hire a contractor to complete the repairs. The Public Works Department will manage and inspect the work. There will be no permit for the individual property owners, and when it's done, all the work will meet our city standards. So this year, we started, again, we started this thing back up from 2013, this is the first year, or 2014, it's the first year we've actually done this. We sent letters out in November to all residents in that maintenance area that we just talked about. My engineers went out and inspected in November as well. They've met with 30-plus property owners regarding the issues that we found, discussed the repairs that are needed, and we found that over 92% of the property owners are planning and authorizing the Public Works to make the repairs and build in for the cost, which is a great thing. One of the, one of the financing tools that we do have at our disposal that we've used in the past is that if we have some lower income, or people that are having problems meeting ends meet, they can, we'll do the work, and then we will bill them on a monthly basis, and their utility bills for one year to get their repairs done and paid for. That gives them an additional, you know, a year to get their work done, and it makes it a little bit more reasonable for them. And that's it. I'm open for any kind of questions you have regarding the program?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So, property owners that have, that say are on a corner lot, and they have the sidewalk or the, where the intersection is, where it's, you showed a picture where it's not ADA accessible, is it their responsibility to change that?
Well, we could make it their responsibility, because it's part of their lot, but we haven't. I've kind of made an internal policy with the people that work for me, that we will take care of the ADA approaches. They're a little bit more expensive, we want them done right. If a property owner chooses to do the sidewalks surrounding it, that's great, they're a little easier to construct, but ADA ramps, there's a lot of different slopes that they need to meet, to meet that ADA standard. Really takes a qualified person, an inspector, to make sure that that happens. So we've decided we're just going to do those ourselves, and we'll do them each year as part of our street maintenance projects, and maybe expand that a bit more, if we see some that need to be replaced.
Lance, if you had to identify four or five major sidewalk projects in a city, what would they be? Just four or five?
I hate to laugh. You know, one that I'd like to work on, I think we might be down there next year, is I like, I think Ida Street really needs repairs, all the way down, both sides of the road. I know I've met with people since I've been here. I think, Mr. Mayor, you may have brought me something several years ago as well, but there was a gentleman that did a survey, and he walked up both sides of Ida Street, and it was in disrepair all the way down, all the way up. I know one of the, I forget her name off the top of my head, but she's a lady in a wheelchair that lives here in State, and she shops over here at Buy Mart, and that's her only way to get around is her wheelchair, and she can't even get there because the sidewalks are so bad. So she's out in the street trying to get to Buy Mart when there's, the sidewalks are there, they're just not, they're not very good, they're terrible. So I would say Ida, a lot of old town, I mean, they just need streets also, but, you know, old town, there are places where there just isn't any sidewalks.
The, I guess I was probably thinking, just thinking bigger than just Ida. Let's see, these main east-west corridors, Washington, Locust, Regis, and Shaft. And all of those could be sort of major?
I think Regis Street has sidewalks on it.
Okay. And so does, I think Locust does too.
For the majority of it, I think, when you get by the industrial area, it doesn't.
But...
It does.
Yeah, some of these, you know, Wilco to First, on these major east-west pedestrian, more pedestrian as we take away the parking, well, let's get out of those cars. We could sell this as a health thing.
Well, I think Keith sent an article to me a couple of weeks ago about, I forget the community here in Oregon, but they're doing a citywide handicap approaches. They're doing them all, just a one-first whoop, replacing them. I don't think we have the budget for that, but it's a nice idea. That's one of the reasons why we're separating it into, you know, districts or, you know, quarter sections, so we can actually afford to get this done.
Right.
It might take a few years, but I think, you know, within 10 years, we can have the whole city done.
No, I think we appreciate the effort here, and it can't get all done at once, we know that. So, thank you, Lance. Any other questions or thoughts, folks?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I did have a question. You mentioned the complexity in installing a handicap ramp. Do you have a general cost estimate for that kind of thing, that kind of work, and what that would require?
I would say, just off the top of my head, about 15 to 2,000 on handicap approach.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? So Lance, have you come across anybody who just flat-out refuses to participate? Says, I don't want to fix my sidewalk? And if so, what do we, what do we have available to us to help that decision along?
Well, it is a municipal code, so we do, we can cite them if we choose to. We could do it, bill them, type of thing, but we haven't, I haven't come across anybody yet. Of course, I've given it to Ian, my engineering tech, to do it, and he hasn't, he hasn't informed me of anybody, but most, most of the time, it's been very receptive, people realize it. I had a lady in my office, and, two weeks ago, she's been looking to do this for the last three years, she just doesn't know how to do it. And so she's on board, she's ready to go, she wants it done, and she's willing to pay for it. And this takes, having to go get a contractor out of her hands, we'll just do it.
My other question was going to be about the lower-income folks that might need some help, and I appreciate you answering that, and having an opportunity, an option for them to spread the payments out over a year, that's pretty cool. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah. We shoot for a year. I can tell you, I spoke to Elizabeth, who does our billing, and I think we're just clearing up, clearing out a few of our debts from three years ago or five years ago. So, you know, the city's doing what we can, we're willing to work with people, and I think that illustrates that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
One more.
Lance, what are we doing for the areas, like you're talking about sidewalk maintenance, but what are we doing for the areas that don't have sidewalks and that need them? I know that there's some projects in the works, but what about those areas that need those attention?
That is a great question, Jordan, or Counselor, or... That's a great question. I think some of those projects are going to have to be capital projects. We can't, you know, we can't really put that on the property owner to put sidewalks in if they were never there before. I think those are capital projects. That's what other cities do, there's capital projects, so... Or if it's a lot that hasn't been developed yet, and obviously, they come in to build a house, or a duplex, or whatever else it is, they will be required to build sidewalks, part of that development. But if it's an existing single-family home there that's never had sidewalks, and we want that sidewalk continuation through a neighborhood or something, it's just going to have to be a capital project, and the city will have to put the bill on it.
Do we have any areas of town that are targeted for that type of project?
I know we're trying to, right now, I'm working with one of the engineers to try to do some work out on Scenic View. I know it's on the far east of town, but it really needs some work out there. We had a property owner come in, or someone that built a lot out on Scenic View last year, and I conditioned them to put a sidewalk in, but it was just by itself, you know? For whatever reason, years before, when a subdivision was built, they didn't require an individual property owner to put sidewalk in front of their house. We don't have any agreements with them. So we're going to build that sidewalk, and we're going to continue that sidewalk. And part of this process is I'm having my engineer design the full street all the way down to East Saniam, so in the future, when we do a capital project, we can build the whole road out, including sidewalks, it'll be designed for that. But, no, I don't have any current projects for that, to be quite honest. I know that's part of the sidewalk, or the street maintenance fund. One of the reasons we're starting this program back up is exactly that, so hopefully, we can find some areas that we can spend some money, not only on the streets, but for sidewalks and pathways to make our community more pedestrian-friendly.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else this evening? This discussion could go on and on, because up in our neighborhood, there's no point in building the sidewalks and curbs when the street needs rebuild, and now you need to put in storm sewers on a lot of that, the old sections of town above Third and Wa, yeah, east of Third Avenue and north of Washington, those older neighborhoods.
I will say, to top this off, Mr. Mayor, we have built some sidewalks, put a nice sidewalk in Pioneer Park, it's ADA accessible a couple of years ago. I can't tell you how many compliments we get from that. I see buses out there from other communities that come out there and use that sidewalk, and the buses are just filled with people in wheelchairs. They got a place to go. So that's something that we have done in the last couple of years to meet that need.
Good. All right. Anything else? Let's move on, then. No staff commission reports, presentations, or comments from the public, one last time this evening? Anything? Business from the city manager?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I've done what I needed to do this evening, business from the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just staying in the theme, since we're on streets and whatnot, the gentleman that spoke from Burnett Street, it's Burnett Street, yes, that is a problem over there, that's my neighborhood, I live a block over from him. I see that various times during the day and when riding my bike. But the bigger issue also is the narrowing of that street there. It gives the perception that the cars are flying, because it narrows the street down to this little bottleneck, if you will, right beside his house, so...
Coming, coming west.
Coming, coming, going east from there, as well as west.
Okay.
Going both directions. So, just something to keep in mind as we're talking about this issue going forward.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else? Business from the council? Okay, future agenda items from March 4, 2019, annual OLCC renewals, economic development strategies, CDBG, whatever that is, and council liaisons. Is there anything else this evening? We're done, thank you.